Into open session this meeting of the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees for September 1st, 2022, beginning at 7:03. Members of the public may access this meeting via AISD website at www.aisd.net. One or more trustees may participate in this meeting via video conference call. A quorum of the Board of Trustees will be physically present at the Administration Building. Thank you all for joining us tonight. Our board meetings are open to the public and we welcome everyone and thank you for participating in public education. While our meetings are open to the public, this is a meeting and we have business to conduct. Disruptions will not be permitted. Anyone who disrupts the meeting or speaks with when others are speaking may be asked to leave or may be escorted by the security attending the meeting. We welcome civic input, but we insist that we remain respectful and civil. Thank you for your cooperation. We will start our meeting with the opening ceremony. Please join Mr. Will Banks in leading us in the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Please silence all cell phones and electronic devices to avoid disruptions in those around you. And now, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Our first item on the agenda is a performance by the Bowie High School Orchestra Ensemble. And it looks like they are prepared and ready. We had the pleasure of listening to them practice. Anthony Andra will now introduce.
Thanks, President Fowler, Board members, and Dr. Cavazos. In 1836, James Bowie was asked to cross the line in service at the Alamo. As the James Bowie High School Orchestra, the students honor that ideal with outstanding musical performance, community service, and academic achievement. The orchestra has consistently earned superior ratings at UIL concert, sight-reading, solo, and ensemble. They participate in school projects including Spookapalooza, Deck the Halls, and Bowie Gives Back for their neighborhood community, as well as entertaining patrons at our local senior living communities. Bowie Orchestra students achieve the highest academic rankings, often featured in the top 10 salutatorian and valedictorian positions, and receive multiple acceptance letters from major universities and trade schools. Under the direction of Jennifer Clyburn and Marissa Cox, tonight's piece is Velocity by Brian Baumages. The student musicians are violinist Anne Pham, Ethan Pham, Arissa Perez, and Ariana Mays, violist Jeffrey Kasonfeth and Bilvo, cellist Cindy Liu, and bassist Jackson Hoag. It's our hope this school year brings amazing success and achievement for everyone with great philosophy. Let's hear them go.
Is he acting like he doesn't know you? And next on our agenda, our High School Student of the Month, and she is from Arlington High School, Molly Ruby. And we will have Principal Stacy Humbles introduce her.
Thank you, Board President Fowler, Dr. Cavazos, and members of the board, and all of our guests. It is my honor to introduce you all to Molly Ruby, our Student of the Month from Arlington High School. I have some little visuals I'd love to share with you all. While I talk about her. Molly is a 12th grader at Arlington High School, and she is a top performer in academics, athletics, and the arts. She's currently in the top 2% of her class, taking all AP and IB courses. She's a member of the National Honor Society and is the Youth Board President of Carson Cares, which is a local nonprofit serving AISD junior high and high schools. She's currently on the varsity soccer and cross-country teams at Arlington High, and she is the bell girl for our cult cavalry. Finally, she is a talented artist and was a state finalist at VACE, the virtual arts scholastic event, with two pieces selected that you have last year in 2022, and one piece selected in 2021. Molly truly exemplifies what it is to be a cult, and there's her artwork on the screen. Thanks, Frank. She is well-rounded, amazingly talented, polite, respectful, and a joy to be around. I'm so proud to be a part of her educational journey, and I can't wait to see how she changes the world. I introduce to you all Molly Ruby.
I just wanted to start by saying thank you to Ms. Humbles just for recognizing me in this way, and just really commend her for the changes she's made to Arlington High in the short time that she's been there. She's really just done an amazing job making it feel like a tight-knit family at Arlington. And I just wanted to introduce some of the people that are here tonight. My mom, first of all, she tested positive for COVID on Monday, so she's not here. She's watching from home. She, her name's Jennifer Ruby. She teaches at Crowe Elementary, but she is watching online right now. But my dad is sitting right here, Brad Ruby, and then my brother next to him cut in on his gym time. So, thank you for being here, Will. And then I have a few teachers here as well, and I just wanted to give a special thank you just to this group of teachers. My soccer coaches are gonna start laughing at me. But just really the collective impact that these five people have had on me and just who I am today is hard to put into words, but just something that I really wanted to share my gratitude for. So Coach Linneberry is here, and Coach Davis, Coach Scott, who is my varsity soccer coach, and then behind her we have Ms. Harmon, and then off to the side, Mr. Willingham, who has been my art teacher for four years now, and has really pushed me to love art. And yeah, I can never figure out what to say about art. But I just wanted to say thank you to all of them for coming. And then I also have a couple of my friends from the soccer team, and then my friend Brett as well, that made it here tonight. So they all came, and that was very sweet of them. And I just wanted to talk about kind of my future plans. So I don't quite know yet, but I'd love to go off to a four-year university, and I plan to study environmental science. I'm really interested in just the idea of sustainability and combining that with just urban planning and design, and really seeing how we can make the world a better place and make our impact as humans more sustainable. So I'm just really starting the college application process, but some of my top schools are the University of Denver, Southwestern, and North Carolina State. So I'm planning to apply to those soon, and once I make a decision, I'll let you know. But that's pretty much it, so thank you so much for letting me be here tonight.
Molly, I'm curious, what is a bell girl?
Oh, sorry. So it's at the football games, we have like the cheerleaders, then the people who run the flags down the field when we score a touchdown. And when they do that, there's someone off to the side ringing the bell when we score touchdowns.
And that's you, you're the bell girl.
Yes, that's what I'll be doing this year.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Well, Molly, the superintendent and I would like to come down and get a picture and present you with something, so if you'll hang on just a minute.
Okay.
We don't expect you to wear it every day, but you could if you wanted, but put it in your jewelry box, and it can be a keepsake. We are so impressed with you.
Thank you so much.
So impressed with you.
And Molly, this is on behalf of our district. It's just a little token of our appreciation for you for being such an outstanding student, such a great representative of our school district, but Arlington High in particular, and thank you for leading the way for many, many students. Congratulations to you.
Thank you so much. We're very proud of you.
Now it's time for our Community Engaged for Excellence Award of Appreciation, and we are honoring Baylor Scott &amp; White and Orthopedic Hospital at Arlington. Mr. Aaron Peralas will introduce.
Good evening, President Fowler, Dr. Cavazos, members of the board. I'm very excited to be able to kick off the school year with the Community Engaged for Excellence Award of Appreciation, and we have a fantastic organization that we'd like to highlight and recognize this evening. And so I'll tell you a little bit more about Baylor Scott &amp; White. So Baylor Scott &amp; White Orthopedic and Spine Hospital at Arlington has provided care for our community since 2010. When you review their mission statement, you can learn that BOSHA is driven by delivering service with the highest standard of excellence, dignity, and respect. Beyond the care they provide to their patients, BOSHA is committed to supporting the community they serve. Over the past four years, BOSHA has donated a total $40,000 to support our AISD back-to-school kickoff. In terms of connecting students with backpacks, that's about 1,000 backpacks for each of the last four years. Even two of those years were the height of COVID, when our first responders were at the peak of strain, and when we reached out to them, they answered the call, and they said, "Aaron, of course, we're gonna continue to help support the program with the funding, but also volunteer support." Continuing their commitment to Arlington ISD, BOSHA is an active contributor to the AISD Education Foundation, which raises funds to support AISD classroom and school district grants. In fact, this past school year, BOSHA donated a $10,000 grant awarded to Larson Elementary and their Wonder Books Would Be Wonderful program. And this past April, BOSHA was a presenting sponsor for the Foundation's AISD Education Celebration at Six Flags Over Texas. This is a community fundraising event that supports our AISD classroom grants program. These are just some of the highlights of how BOSHA has impacted our Arlington ISD community, and so they truly are representative of a community engaged for excellence for AISD. At this time, it's my honor to ask Mr. Alan Beck, who is the president and CEO of Baylor Scott &amp; White at Arlington. Thank you very much, sir.
Thanks. Thank you, Aaron, for President Fowler, board members, Dr. Cavazos. It is an honor to be recognized this evening, it really is, I appreciate that. Our mission and goal at the hospital obviously is to provide high-quality care, great outcomes, high patient satisfaction, and that kind of fits in the way Aaron described our mission statement, but it goes beyond that. We feel that is our responsibility also in supporting the community that we do serve, and this is one of the ways that we do that. We see the great work and also the challenges that AISD is facing right now. We're happy to support it, and we see the great work that's being done in our schools, and we're very proud of that also. So on behalf of our board, all of our physicians and staff at the hospital, we're very humbled to accept this recognition, and also very proud of our continued partnership with AISD. Thank you guys very much.
And Molly, this is for Molly, I have to add this here. So I was the school mascot, and we had a bell also. I was thinking of you.
Well, Mr. Beck, we want to thank you so much to you and your board. Seems like I see you out in the community at all the different events and representing, and thank you so much, and we appreciate all that you do in the community, and we appreciate all that you do here at AISD. Superintendent and I would like to come down and give you a little something.
Yes, thank you.
All right, Mr. Beck, it says, "Community Engaged for Excellence Award of Appreciation, presented to Baylor Scott &amp; White Orthopedic and Spine Hospital of Arlington for your volunteer service to the Arlington ISD, September 1st, 2022." Thank you so very much.
Thank you very much.
Alan, thank you so much for your partnership. It goes without saying that our back-to-school, where Aaron is, yeah, back-to-school would not be the same without your support, and you're consistently there. You're humble, because you don't like to take a lot of credit, but you have provided the back support that we need for the backpacks, and I just appreciate it. Our community is better because of you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
We now come to our open forum for agenda items. As stated on the posted agenda, members of the public who desire to address the board regarding an item on the agenda are required to register at www.aisd.net. Board meeting speaker request, no later than 3:00 PM the day of the board meeting. Mrs. Benjamin, do we have any requesters registered to address the board regarding agenda items?
Not regarding agenda items. We do have one later for a non-agenda item.
Thank you, Ms. Benjamin. We will now address the consent agenda items, which consist of routine items grouped together for approval as one item. Unless removed from the consent agenda, these orders will be acted on one time with no discussion. Trustees, are there any requests for items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda for further discussion? Seeing none, is there a motion to accept the agenda?
We move to accept the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. McMura. We have a motion for Mr. Will Banks and a second by Ms. McMura to accept the consent agenda as presented. It shouldn't have been that hard. It's a new word. All right. Are we ready to vote? We vote in the affirmative. Now we'll discuss... Nope. We move to our discussion items. Dr. Cavazos?
Thank you, President Fowler. And this evening, we bring two discussion items. We'll start with the 2019 bond program update. As you know, that a lot of work is happening with our bond. It really goes on all school year and into the summer, and so we periodically bring an update for the board, and we also have CBOC that gets an update as well with a lot more detail. And at this time, I'll ask Kelly Horn to take us through that bond update.
Thank you, President Fowler, members of the board, and Dr. Cavazos. I'll be brief this evening. You've seen a lot of this before, but we'll go back through this if I could go to the next slide, and I have control of this right? Okay. So you've seen this slide many, many times, but we always bring this forward so that the public and you are reminded about how we have the $966 million allocated. While there's a big number in facilities, the other programs are supported by facilities, and I mentioned this in CBOC last week, while fine arts may have a number that's much smaller on the screen, that's to buy instruments and fine arts uniforms and things like that for band and orchestra and so forth, but much of what we do in facilities for fine arts and technology and security is embedded in those facility numbers as well. This slide recaps the total expenditures to date, as well as what's encumbered in our budgets to date. Just a bit over $700 million has been approved so far through our first three issuances, and at this point, we have just shy of $400 million that's available. If you recall, we've spent a lot of time over the past few months talking about how we might realign the bond program, and so we stopped down for just a bit of time, and so some of that money is, it will be spent quickly now that we're regaining that speed and moving forward. So I'll show you those and some of the pictures that you're gonna see here in just a bit, because a lot of those, a lot of that number, the big number that's there, almost $400 million, is in some very large projects that we have in the front of the bond. At the very bottom of that slide, though, you can see that our interest in additional proceeds exceeds our bond issuance costs, and that's a good thing also. This slide starts to break down each of those groups, and so on the facility side, you can see where we have just about 58% of our funds are available now, and you'll start to see in these next pictures, and the inset there is a picture of Bailey. The Bailey project will begin, will be bid very shortly, and so a big portion of those dollars are aligned with Bailey, along with schools like Arlington High School with the Fine Arts and Dual Language Academy that we're building there. So I'll go to the next slide. You can see that we have approximately 36 projects in the queue right now in one form or another. We just shifted the bulk of Phase 3 out of planning and into design and in the bidding phase. Most of those 13 in design currently are going to shift to the bidding phase now that we've been cleared to move forward. Those represent those more critical projects that we felt were important to continue moving forward with. And so you'll see some of the projects are in closeout as well, and some of those are significant projects like the admin building we're in today. So in Phase 1, the two projects that we held primarily on were the Glassby Field Project and the Martin High School Project. Both of those are ready to bid now. The one, Glassby Field, sits in the design column only because it's still in the city's hands to approve the permitting, so we're really close to getting that freed up, and then that will immediately move into the bidding stage with Martin. And so, and then we look forward to beginning construction here in the early part of the winter. The closeout projects, some of those are closed out now, projects like Crowe and the Food Nutrition Service Center. You'll see some of those highlighted in some of the pictures that we share here in just a bit. So we, most of you or many of you have been to Gunn. These are some of the very latest pictures now that we have furniture completely moved in. The students are in full use of the building. The superintendent and I had a little conversation yesterday about how well the plan has worked and how well the traffic plan has worked around Gunn, and if you remember, the impact that we had on Fielder Road for so many years because we loaded, but we had ingress and egress both on the Fielder side, and now that's moved around to what's the new front of the school off of Paisley, and so it's really freed up our traffic impact on Fielder, and so that's been a success. And just the building itself has been an amazing building, and so if you haven't been there and you'd like to take a tour, let me know, and we'll try to schedule something, but it's a beautiful, beautiful venue, and it's all one building now, so the students don't have to leave to go to the cafeteria or to the gym and so forth. You've all seen Crowe, we've been out there and celebrated Crowe many times, but we had some great shots now with the students, with the building being in use fully, and so great project. One of the biggest impacts there has been the gym, new gymnasium, of course, and the cafeteria and kitchen addition. And then I'll show you, highlight some of the pictures of some of our newer facilities, if you remember. I put this in here this time just so you can kind of see what our vision and the dream was, right, for what Webb might look like, and I hope that you'll find that it looks very similar to what we envisioned, you know? And so, and that's probably two or three weeks old now. It's really started to make a lot of change, the glasses going in and the colors around the building are starting to come together, but we still have landscaping to do and some additional driveway and parking. But the playgrounds are being built off on the north side, and so that project's moving along well, and we plan to have a celebrated mid-year opening here soon. There's another picture of that same Webb project. Spence, we had a couple late additions, so your packet probably doesn't show this photo, and Spence was really excited about the aerials that he has available these days, and he asked if we could put them in, and I said, "Let's do it," you know? So you could see how this building sets up well next to our current building, and I'll remind you that, you know, the current Webb Elementary was Nichols Junior High School, so it's a very large school, and it's just not scaled for elementary students either. So the new school is gonna be scaled greatly. That old school that we have there will come down and free up a tremendous amount of land that we have for future use. So I thought you might enjoy that, and Spence, thank you for the pictures too, so. And then, of course, our Food Nutrition Services Building, we highlight this all the time. I know Mr. Lewis would say thank you again and again and again, and he does. The new freezer's been amazing for us to have for the facility, and it's made efficiency for him much greater. And then, of course, our new admin building, we all love this building. It's really, really promoted, again, efficiency for our district and having all of our staff here in one building primarily. We still have a few that are in other buildings, but working on a plan for those as well. And then, of course, some of our newest playground photos, and I didn't show the one of me in the swing. I think y'all have seen enough of me in that swing, right? Next time, I'll be on the merry-go-round. So, but what a great, what a great day we celebrated at Crowe, and the kids, every time we open one of these, it's just awesome. The kids are so excited, and you can't help but laugh and maybe even cry a little bit just because of the joy that they share. And then, of course, I'll jump to some of the other programs, our buildings that we want to celebrate, Berry being one of those, and this one's a little harder to see, but if you squint really close, you'll be able to see it in this next photo. But what we do have there, and we talked a little bit about this, we've struggled with getting concrete, we've struggled with getting steel, so, but our partner, the city, has been really great to help us move forward and allow us to build portions of the building. But we still have landscaping to do and some additional driveway and parking. But the playgrounds are being built off on the north side, and so, that project's moving along well, and we plan to have, celebrate a mid-year opening here soon. There's another picture of that same Webb project. Spence, we had a couple late additions, so your packet probably doesn't show this photo. And Spence was really excited about the aerials that he's, that he has available these days, and he asked if we could put them in. And I said, "Let's do it," you know? So, you could see how this building sets up well next to our current building. And I'll remind you that, you know, the current Webb Elementary was Nichols Junior High School. So, it's a very large school, and it's just not scaled for elementary students either. So, the new school is going to be scaled greatly. That old school that we have there will come down and free up a tremendous amount of land that we have for future use. So, I thought you might enjoy that. And Spence, thank you for the pictures, too. So. And then, of course, our Food Nutrition Services Building. We highlight this all the time. I know Mr. Lewis would say "thank you" again and again and again. He does. The new freezer's been amazing for us to have for the facility, and it's made efficiency for him much greater. And then, of course, our new admin building. We all love this building. It's really, really promoted, again, efficiency for our district and having all of our staff here in one building primarily. We still have a few that are in other buildings, but working on a plan for those as well. And then, of course, some of our newest playground photos, and I didn't show the one of me in the swing. I think y'all have seen enough of me in that swing, right? Next time, I'll be on the merry-go-round. So, but, but what a great, what a great day. We celebrated Crowe and the kids. Every time we open one of these, it's just awesome. The kids are so excited, and you can't help but laugh and maybe even cry a little bit just because of the joy that they share. And then, of course, I'll jump to some of the other programs, our buildings that we want to celebrate, Berry being one of those. And this one's a little harder to see, but if you squint really close, you'll be able to see it in this next photo. But what we do have there, and we talked a little bit about this, we've struggled with getting concrete. We struggle with getting steel. So, but our partner, the city, has been really great to help us move forward and allow us to build portions of the building, even though we don't have certain items sequenced the way they normally would be. And the city's struggling in the same effort, as well as some of the large contractors in town. So, we have, but what we have is probably the most important part of the building, the primary part of it, which is the kitchen and cafeteria and the classroom wing there, the libraries there. The other portion you see that's just concrete and a little bit of steel going up right now represents the kindergarten area, the sped or the special education area, and the office. And that's a single-story volume, so it'll go a lot quicker. But you can see the immense amount of flatwork or concrete, if you will, that we've put in relative to drives and parking and so forth, much more than we have at a lot of our schools. That's just part of the new designs that we're being asked to do. But, but it should bring a lot of that traffic out of the neighborhood streets and onto our property, and that was what the city's request for us was. And then, of course, just not a bird's eye look, but on the ground to kind of see what it looks like up close. You don't always get a chance to walk through a construction site, but this is probably, again, two weeks old. There's been a lot of progress made. And so, again, our timeline for Berry and for Thornton, which I'll show you a bit here in just a minute, is August of 2023. And that's our timeline for opening, right? Our timeline for completion is around April to 1st of May. So, we'll have plenty of time to bring furniture in and have the schools ready for the kiddos when they get there. Of course, this is our vision for Thornton, and I think you'll see in the next photo that it looks a lot like what we visioned. So, that aerial view shows you that about the only thing I'm missing there is that the piece of concrete off on the right side of the photo is where the gym will go. Otherwise, the classroom wings are moving along very well on the, what would be the right bottom look is where the cafeteria and kitchen is. And of course, you can see we preserve those three big, beautiful trees in the middle of the campus. So, we won't look like a, we'll look like a new school when we open, but it won't look as fresh as, you know, newly planted trees. We'll have some old growth there, and that's really nice. And then, of course, just a little bit of a look on the ground of kind of what it looks like when we started hanging steel and putting the deck down and pouring concrete. And then, finally, I always highlight these, too, because there's a lot of small projects in and around this bond program, but they're just as impactful. Both of these represent playground areas for kindergartners that, where they can go out and do artwork on the concrete, and they can play in the fenced area safe from getting out into the street and so forth. And one of those is John's, one of our very oldest schools on the left. And then, Ashworth, one of our newer prototype schools that's in the southeast part of town there on the right. And, but you can see the impact of what doing something, something like that does for an old campus and a newer campus. And then, finally, moving into our Phase 2, this is what I mentioned earlier. A lot of those schools in design have moved over to bidding just in the last day since I put this together or so and finalized it. Even Adams and Hale are moved over into the bidding phase now as well. And those represent some very large projects. Again, the Sam Houston Project, Wildman Field, Bailey, of course, the Arlington High School, Fine Arts and Dual Language Academy addition will be, will be seeking guaranteed maximum price on that within the next few days as well. Then, our Phase 3, those projects primarily are still in design, but very close to leaving design and being ready for bid as well. And then, of course, our Phase 4 projects, these and Phase 5, both are all pending projects. We'll bring the Phase 4 architects to you later in the fall for approval. And then, next year, this time, we'll also bring the Phase 5 architects for your approval. So, I just wanted to show you that there's a large group of projects in those last two phases. We're still doing very well on our hub numbers. These numbers are from the end of May, but we have, just in the last couple of days, finalized the numbers. And we're just below that number now. We're just around 33%. We're just over 32% right now, so we're holding well, and we expect to continue to hold that number as we go through the final projects. And so, I'll show you these other slides. And the thing that I'll highlight here, and if you have specific questions, even for Dr. Anderson, he can help you with that, but I'll try to do, do justice for him. The, just like with, with facilities and the construction dollars, the, the fine arts and transportation and the security technology portion of this, they've also been working very hard to get back on track and spend those dollars as they, as they need to for what they intended. But we've all had those same impacts relative to the cost of goods increasing. But Dr. Anderson made sure to tell me that they're, they're, they're doing well and they're on track. And just recently, in the past few months, they've, they've encumbered quite a bit of money for new equipment and uniforms. And so, there's about a little less than half of their number is available, but they're actively working to move that and encumber that as quickly as possible. The same thing, again, with safety, security, and technology. There's any number of projects that Dr. Hill and his team could enumerate that we're doing for the campuses and so, but again, it gives you a good snapshot of where we're at with the dollars available. And then, the same thing with transportation. The lead times on all of the equipment that we're all buying, whether it's steel, in my case, and concrete, or instruments, or buses, or technology is longer than it would be normally. So, the sale, the cycle for, or lead time cycle for even these three groups, where it generally was always easily, easily obtained within a year, has now stretched beyond a year in a lot of cases, too, just like it is for us. So, with that, I'll answer any questions.
Are there any trustees with questions? Mr. Will Banks, go ahead.
Oh, there it is. Thank you, President Fowler and Mr. Horn. It is really great to see steel and buildings going up on what I think are going to be just game changers for East Arlington with Berry, Thornton. And also seeing the, you know, Webb really come to fruition as well. I was just there for the beginning of school, and I was pretty amazed. You spoke about some supply chain issues, and, you know, we've got, we've got a very complex system of schools in phases to ensure that they all work like clockwork to, to get all of those East Arlington schools rebuilt within our timeframe. It seems to me that it's going to be a nightmare trying to manage the logistics and the timing of those with the supply chain lead times that we've seen. For instance, I believe at Webb, we're now looking at a December or move-in date because there's still supply chain issues with glass. Is that correct?
Yeah. We currently, they have temporary glass in at Webb, so they can continue to acclimatize the building and make the finishes that they need to for the building. But you're correct. The permanent glass will, it shows up a little bit day by day by day, and so, we just switch that out as we go. But we do plan to still finish right around the end of October, but that leaves us with the task of moving in, right? And so, I've talked a lot with Dr. Cavassos and the staff, the principal as well has been involved. And we want to, we want to do it where it's comfortable for the, for the teachers and the students. The great thing is, is we're in the old Webb, and so, we can make a move very easily. We'll hire a moving company so that when the teachers are packed, we'll do that seamlessly over possibly two weekends and allow the teachers to move over a lot more comfortably and make use possibly even of some holiday period so that they've got an opportunity to go in and get their rooms ready and so forth. Great thing about it, and I think I mentioned it before, is we have a, while she may be a newer principal, Ms. Gaspar is a very experienced principal. She went through this with Peach. And so, she's prepared and has done a great job of preparing her staff as well. So, while it represents a little bit of a challenge, it's nothing that we can't handle. That's for sure.
Yeah. My biggest worry, though, is, is the dominoes in East Arlington. Are the supply chain issues putting that precarious timeline at risk, or are we still looking pretty good?
I think we're good. And if you remember, and we talked a lot about this when we were building this and phasing this, Webb was always going to be a bit of a challenge because Webb was right up front, and Crowe was, was that first domino that had fallen, right? And so, we really got ahead at Crowe. The Gunn Project was important, right, because we needed to bring a place, we need to have a place for those kids to matriculate into from Corey and Jones. So, we put those projects up front. We did a little bit of design work late in the 2014 bond on Gunn and Crowe and even Webb. And then, Webb had the tightest timeframe because it was a true 13-month project. And so, we felt, at the time, I think we felt really good about it, and we felt confident we could do that. But as you mentioned, some of these supply chain issues have hurt us a little bit. But the difference with Thornton and Berry is we, we really pushed earlier on and tried to create a different method for scheduling to allow our contractors to come onboard much sooner. And we gave them some, some six months to begin procuring before they mobilized to the site so that they could have that time to get well ahead and soak up some of that delay that we thought we might have getting steel and glass and so forth in that first six months and still leave us another 14 months to build and construct. So, we really, we took what we normally try to do in a 16-month schedule from start to finish, we really stretched that out over about 20 to 24 months. And so, we're hoping that that planning and that scheduling, that phasing will keep us from, from running into any delays opening in August like we want to.
Yeah. No, that's awesome to hear.
Yes, sir.
So, I really appreciate your, your management, project management skills, because they've truly been tested, this bond package, I bet.
They have. And I have to give a little credit if I can. Mr. Mike Parkes, who's our Director of Facility Planning and Construction, is, I always say he's a savant, he's a savant when it comes to construction. The guy just knows this business. And so, he and his team, the whole Facility Planning and Construction team are amazing. And thank you all for letting us have that team in-house and as a part of our employment because they're really amazing. A great group.
Yeah. That's good to hear. That's good to hear. And you'd be glad to know that I've already taken you up on your offer and texted Lisa to schedule that tour of Gunn.
I'll be happy to do it.
And any other facilities next Thursday you think I should go see?
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Great questions.
You bet.
Ms. McMura?
Thank you, President Fowler. Thank you, Mr. Horn, for presenting this information to us tonight. And a lot of this to our Citizens Bond Oversight Committee just last week, and they had great questions as well. I only had one question. Now that school is back in full swing, I'm getting a lot of parents curious about the Phase 2 playgrounds. Are the ones that, some of them, like you mentioned, have already been completed, but for the ones that are still Phase 2, are they still slated to be completed by the end of spring 2023?
Absolutely. In fact, we, we expect all of the Phase 2 should wrap up early, or I'd say early winter. I call early winter January, February timeframe, you know, barring any, any weather impacts, you know, with pouring concrete. We have all the equipment. Thank you again for letting me to, you know, to buy that equipment early on is a big package that really saved us. And so, all the equipment is secured, both for Phase 2 and Phase 3. It's in our warehouse, not ours, but warehouse, the playground equipment warehouse. And so, it's available immediately, and so, our concrete contractor is moving quickly from project to project. So, Phase 2 should go seamlessly, and we hope to have all of those ready for springtime play when the kids go out. And we're, we will begin, we'll bid the work for the concrete on Phase 3 very likely in that mid-winter timeframe. And then, and then, we'll have those start early in the spring. And so, I would, I'd really hope that by the time we get to next August that, when we open school, that we could have all of the playgrounds done. That may be a bit of a stretch for you.
But we're on track.
But I'm, I'm, I'm going to push really hard. We are on track.
Wonderful. That's really exciting. And I still want to know where that epic playground is that we're housing all the equipment. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Horn.
No problem.
It's a super secret.
Well, the good, yeah. Good thing is, it's all, it just comes in pieces, so it stacks pretty well. But...
Thank you, Ms. McMura. Ms. Mays?
Thank you, President Fowler. Thank you, Mr. Horn. I just have one question on, on the hub participation calculations. Can you please remind us, now it's been a while since we talked about this calculation, but for the budget amount, and I guess it's Slide 23?
You go back to that for us. Okay?
Yes. So, where do we get that budget amount for Phases 1 through 3?
The budget amount comes from our, from, not from our, our architects or the general contractor, but our, but our subcontractor group is where that comes from. So, so when we look at the dollars that we issued, that we've issued to subcontractors, that's the, because that's where the real, that's where the real impact is, so to speak, if you will, because it, it's where we have the bulk of those hub subcontractors and local contractors that are participating in our projects and so forth.
Okay. So, that's the amount budgeted to be expended for the subcontractors?
Yes, ma'am. And when, when we say budgeted, what we mean by that is we, we, and you might remember as we bring projects to you, we ask for them, we ask for their commitment, and we ask for that commitment in writing in the list of those subcontractors they plan to use before we award to them. And then, the intent there is to make sure that they hold to that number. And if they, and if, if, if a subcontractor falls away, or, you know, for some reason, we ask them to try to replace that subcontractor that they lost or that hub subcontractor with another. And so, I think that's probably the biggest difference in, in our number and the increase that we've seen from the 2014 bond is just getting that commitment early and making sure that they partner with us to hold to that commitment.
Okay. So, budget amount is what's been committed by the subcontractors?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. 23%. Now where that comes from. Then, for the Tier 2 hub participation amount?
Right.
Where does that amount come from?
Again, that's the, that's, at this point, that's, that's what they, that's the committed number, the commitment number of that budgeted amount. And then, and then, finally, you can see what we've expended to date and relative to that, the overall bond project dollars at this particular time. So, so of that number, the $47 million is what we've spent on Tier 2 hub participation at this point. And that number, again, these are, these are from May. I can, I'll bring you some, some newer numbers. But, but that, that's the, that's where the road meets the road right there is the $47 million.
Okay. And then, expenses to date, what's the difference then between the hub participation amount and expenses to date?
Yes. So, the expenses to date are just those dollars that we, that we spent on the overall projects out of that number. And so, so if we've, if we've expended $123,289,000 and some change of that, 205, the $47 million is what we spent on the hub participation.
Okay. So, overall would be hub and every other?
Yes. That's correct.
Okay. Okay. And then, the Tier 2 hub participation amount to date would be the calculation of what's expended to date?
Of the expended, yes, ma'am.
Okay. And that's how we get the 32.97?
That's correct, yes.
Now, from what I'm remembering, I think we've maintained at least 30% or above?
We have.
Probably since you started off with this calculation.
We have.
Okay.
And it, and it will likely, I would, I really want it to stay above 30%, but that's a lofty goal. It's, it very likely as we start to see bigger numbers come in and we bring in more subs, you know, that will change. And it will always, as I mentioned at CBOC meeting last week, it will always kind of drop down and climb back up a little bit, and it'll become a little more volatile as we start to get more and more projects on the books. But, but again, we would love to be over 30%, and we're, and we're shooting for that. So, we'd like to, we'd like to eclipse that number if possible.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much for going over that again with me.
Yes, ma'am.
And maybe in the future, we can have some discussions on maybe increasing what our commitment is.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Understood. Yes, ma'am.
Are there any other trustees with questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Horn.
It's my pleasure.
Thank you so much to you and your team, all your hard work, and we're so glad that you're having to figure out everything and that you're the expert. So, thank you so much.
You're very welcome. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
We will now move to discussion item 2, our TASB policy update. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Fowler.
And we bring as a TASB policy update 119 for your discussion. As a reminder, this has gone through our governance committee. And this is a abbreviated presentation as you all have had these policies and to review. We bring it as a discussion in the first meeting and then we'll bring it as an action if appropriate at the next meeting. Dr. Hill will lead us through a summary of what these policies entail. Dr. Hill?
Good evening, Board members and Dr. Cavassos, again here to briefly discuss policy update 119. And so in general, 119 encompasses legal and local policy recommendations from TASB. Administration also includes recommended revisions to EF Local for your consideration this evening. Just a reminder, you all remember this, legal updates are changes in laws. Legal policies should not be adopted but only reviewed and implemented by, reviewed by the board and implemented by administration. Local updates do need board action to adopt, approve, revise, or repeal those policies in general. Update 19 addresses 60 policies, 51 local, I'm sorry, 51 legal and non-local policies. And again, A, administration recommends some changes to EF Local. The review process consisted of the appropriate staff reviewing all of these policies along with general counsel, back and forth with TASB on some, some of the other discussions, as well as the administration and, and other department heads have looked at all of these as well and how they would actually be implemented and how they impact our, our work. So just a closer look at some of the revisions, some of the legal and local policies. And so BBBA Local, I'm sorry, Legal is one that, that deals with elections. And basically if a candidate for, running for the board is, is unopposed, then there is a policy that kind of gives you guidance on what to do with, with regard to declaring that, that candidate elected and, and basically not having to go through the election there. Termination of a deployment for resignation addresses provisions of a contract abandonment, there are some special ed rules that revise the list of individuals who must be included in an ARD. Again, some academic achievement for graduation details with students who must complete the financial aid requirement as a part of the high school graduation requirements. Student welfare FFH requirements, parental notification upon report of dating violence, again, all these are changes in law. GKG Legal, Community Relations Clarified, provisions on obtaining criminal history records for the, that information. Some of the local policies, dealing with records management, added policy language to address the district's management of electronic records because that's where we're going now. EHB, dealing with curriculum design, requires the district to provide regular training opportunities for students with dyslexia. And again, that's something that, that's, that we do here in the district on a regular anyway. Special education identification and evaluation basically requires that the district ensure that a student who is transitioning from early childhood be provided an IEP by the child's third birthday. Special education at GT as well removes a statutory requirement that the district annually certify to the commissioner that our GT program is consistent with the Texas State Plan. Again, we've done that in the past. That's no longer required. Some more policy changes dealing with crisis intervention, trauma. It's the Senate Bill 1266 requires training in trauma-informed care as a part of, of our professional development policy. And FFH Local dealing with recommended new texts which requires the district upon receipt a report of daily dating violence to immediately notify the parents of that. And then again, EF Local, as we talked about, this one comes from, from administration and is not a part of update 119. Instructional resource, and it just basically changes the selection and review process for instructional material. And we've vetted that internally with our academic services team and ready to implement that. So our next steps would be we continue to review and advise these local policies. There's some requests that came from the governance committee at our last meeting to continue to vet out a couple of those. And then we'll bring those back hopefully for consideration at the September 15th board Any questions about update 119 or EF Local?
Do I have any trustees with questions or comments? I see. Thank you, Dr. Hill. Thank you so much for your presentation and the great information. We appreciate it.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Now we come to our open forum for non-agenda items. Ms. Benjamin, do we have any requesters registered to address the board regarding non-agenda items?
Yes, ma'am. We have Rochelle Sanders, and she's going to visit with us virtually. Frank's going to help us with that.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Benjamin. There she is. Welcome, Ms. Sanders. The second open forum segment of the meeting provides citizens with an opportunity to address the trustees on any subject except personnel. This is not intended to be a discussion or a debate, and trustees will not reply to the speakers. Derogatory comments aimed at an individual will not be tolerated. You will have two minutes to speak. Mrs. Benjamin will notify you when your time is up, and then you will please end your presentation. Can you hear us, Ms. Sanders? We can't hear you. Are you muted? We, we can't hear you. Wait, I heard something. She doesn't have an active microphone? Can you check your microphone? They're able to tell that your microphone's not active. I'm sorry, Frank? Is it working? Ah, there you are, Ms. Now she just went muted. There you are.
Okay, how about now?
Thank you, Ms. Sanders. Welcome.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Ms. Sanders.
Okay. Thank you. Wait, I heard something. Yes, ma'am. Are you able to hear me?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, good evening. Thank you for taking the time to listen to the issue at hand that I'd like to bring to the board. The agenda that I have tonight is just understand the safety measures that are put in place for creditable versus non-creditable threats and to understand how those are determined. The concerns are...
Is your microphone on?
Oh, man.
They're able to tell that your microphone's not active.
Let me do, I have an option.
Yes, we can hear you.
Should I speak or?
Go ahead, Ms. Sanders.
Thank you. Again, I just wanted to thank you guys for taking the time to...
We can hear you. If you'll turn off the YouTube, I think it'll be better.
Okay. I'm sorry.
There we go.
Oh, sorry. Okay. So the agenda tonight is just to discuss the safety measures that are put in place for the creditable versus non-creditable threats and to understand how those determine, are determined. Some of the underlying concerns are as a parent and as a community that we can't just sit back and hope that the non-creditable incident doesn't quickly escalate into a creditable incident because by then, you know, multiple lives could be at risk. The other concern is my child, and, and I quote, said, "It ain't no biggie." And it's as common as quoting writing on the school walls. And to me, this should not be the norm. Our community should not feel comfortable with this mindset from a teenager. The few questions that I have are, I'd like to know what dictates the difference between creditable versus non-creditable? How and who determines that? Is it a social media post with a threat versus an active shooter showing up at the school? The other question is what actions are taking place depending on the two scenarios? You know, if it is just a, if it's a non-creditable threat versus a creditable, how do those differ? There was an incident recently at Lamar High School on the 19th of August, and during the communication that was put out by the principal is that there was extra security that was going to be on site. And I'm just wondering what that looks like? How are they positioned throughout the school? My child specifically...
Ms. Sanders, I'm sorry to interrupt you. You're already out of your, your time. Your two minutes has passed, but if you'll reach out to staff, we would be, we'd be more than happy.
What would you tell them?
Okay, staff will reach out to you to answer these questions and, and be able to discuss with staff and get the answers that you're looking for.
Okay.
We thank you so much for your time tonight. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
We now move to our superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Fowler. And tonight, just a couple of items to, to cover. And it always seems like we pick on David Lewis, but it, it's not designed that way. It's just that these things all come into fruition at the same time. But if you haven't eaten in one of our high schools, try this because this is one of our lunch menus, and it may seem familiar because I've talked about it before, but the students of the culinary arts class at Bowie High School are all over this menu because last year they had a chance to do some of this creation along with our food service and food and nutrition services director, David Lewis. And it made the top recipes for one of our high school menus this year. And it started last week with blackened chicken mozzarella, which sold out at Bowie. And this week was the chicken and waffles, the much anticipated chicken waffles. And that also is a credit to our students at Bowie High School specifically, or in addition, her, their teacher, Amber Craven. They created this. They pressed Mr. Lewis that they could do a better job. Maybe that's not how they said it, David, but that they could do, they could add to their menu. And we took them up on it and they did it, and now it's part of the lunch menu. So thank you, Mr. Lewis, for completing that full circle of student learning that includes creation, demonstration, and implementation, et cetera. So thank you for that. Next, I'd like to offer my condolences to the family of Bob Bergen. Bob was one of our namesakes at Bergen Elementary. He died on August 19th at 87 years of age. He leaves a huge legacy, not only for our district but our entire community, for the work he and his wife, Tilly, and the rest of the Bergen family have done for the entire Arlington area with their work at Mission Arlington and Mission Metroplex, as well as the church work. His district work alone is incredible as Bob started his career as a math teacher at Carter Junior High 62 years ago and ended his full-time career as principal at Arlington High School between 1989 and 1993. He made several stops along the way and helped, helping after even he was retired. He's a wonderful, wonderful representative of our district and will be missed, and our condolences to the entire Bergen family. I want to congratulate our chief financial officer, Darla Moss, and her team for helping to score a 98. There you go on the screen. It's kind of a flashback from the 80s or something, but it's a 98 for School Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas, or the FIRST rating system as it's the acronym. The score is based on the analysis of financial data for, for financial and fiscal year 2021, based on 100 points. 98 earned us a superior achievement and is two points higher than the score we had last year, which is outstanding. We also...
We can get 100 next year.
That's the goal, actually. We haven't told you yet, but that's the goal. No, that is. Ensures public schools are held accountable for the quality of their financial management practices. Congratulations to Ms. Moss and all our finance division for that. While I'm on the topic of congratulations, I'd like to congratulate our Bolles Junior High principal, kind of hard to say Bolles Junior High, she was at Piercy for so long, but Cody Van Duzey, she's at Bolles now, for being selected to represent the district in the CONFELLOST Program for Distinguished Principals, which is really selective. This program allows representatives from across the country to gather and discuss the roles that systems, equity, gender, race, et cetera, communication, and other elements play in education. Cody is an outstanding representative, and we want to congratulate her on behalf of the entire district. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Do we have any trustees with reports?
Well, I have a report. So in the past week, I have had the privilege of attending two of our sporting events here in the district. I was happy to, to be invited to the Martin game, and they played against Lake Travis, and Martin won, and it was the ESPN game of the week. And so I was thrilled to be there for that. I was also invited to attend Young Junior High, seventh grade, very first volleyball game. And I was invited by a seventh grader on the team, Presley Wallace. And they won their game, and it was the very first game that, that they'd all really been together and able to, to play well together. And it was a tremendous game, and I appreciated Presley inviting me to her volleyball game.
All right, Ms. Secretary, do we have anything to report?
Not at this time, President Fowler.
Thank you. It is, oh, that's me. You're not president yet. Madam Secretary. I know. Here, I'm done. It is now 8:09, and we are adjourned.